My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we got no one online, correct?
Correct.
And we got no one in the audience, so we don't have to go through all the other stuff about, um, you all know where to go and how to follow Ron.
There you go. What else? Make it simple.
There you go. Um, approval of last minutes to the meeting, did anybody miss? Okay. So, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
They're moved.
They're moved, seconded? Okay, we got a move on the second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. One exception. Okay, no legal notices, order of business, other board actions, rules and procedures. Ron, give us a little background on the changes that will be made to the procedures, why, what, or how come, and then we'll go through them real quick.
Okay, um, two things. Number one, the state, when they changed the seeker regulations in 2021.
Yep.
But in their, in the town law, not the seeker regulations, certain procedural requirements for the planning board to follow. And as you recall, with a subdivision, you have a default provision in the town, uh, state law that basically says if you don't take action within certain prescribed periods, it's approved by default and all they need is a notification from the town clerk that you failed to comply. So, we gotta, we gotta avoid that. The other thing that's in there is, uh, requirements for, which are different, for whether you have a public hearing or whether you don't have a public hearing. If you don't have a public hearing, the clock starts a lot earlier than when you do have a public hearing. And this applies to site plans or subdivisions. You gotta have a public hearing for special use permits and for subdivisions. Which you don't necessarily, yeah, you don't necessarily have to have one. And we, we haven't been having public hearings for site plans.
We were having a permit.
On certain applications.
Ones that were more complex and that seeker was more complex than that.
Yeah. I gotta be careful what I, what I say. Okay?
Yeah.
Um, and there are some other things in there that, uh, you know, we started looking at and, and basically with Dan and, uh, looking at the zoning board of appeals, we wanted to address, you know, what do we do if somebody comes in and decides they want to change something? And we gotta coordinate a review or we have other things going on that, and then there's two different sets of criteria, rules for the zoning board from the planning board.
Right.
And so what we do here as a planning board could affect what the zoning board may have to do or can't do. Okay, so that's kind of where we're at with the, the changes. I think we can go through them very quickly if you want to follow, um, page one.
Yeah, page one, that first, do we need to keep it? I say no.
Yeah.
The area there about COVID.
Yep.
We don't need that, so we can scratch that.
Hopefully, we never need it again.
Hopefully, we never, ever need that again. Um, the determination of completeness. Now, Ron and I had a lengthy discussion on the phone about this.
That probably confused the hell out of you.
Actually, it clarified things. This could use me, but it, so basically what, here's my understanding, Ron. My understanding is when we get to a certain point and we are ready to do seeker, then we can declare an application complete.
Yeah, it's up to the planning board.
Right.
To determine if they have a complete application. Once you have determined you have a complete application, then you schedule the public hearing.
Uh, you can't have a complete application. Well, can you have a complete application before a public hearing? I thought we, when we talked, we couldn't have it until after the public.
You can't make a decision until you have a complete.
Correct.
Okay, but you can determine that you have enough information to schedule a public hearing.
I think that's the word, verbage we need, that we have enough information to, to schedule a public hearing and begin the seeker process.
Yeah, and, and the biggest change to this is that in the past, we would receive an application. Uh, we'd check it in according to the schedule Dan prepares.
Correct.
And then we would schedule a public hearing without you guys.
Right.
Agreeing to. And we've got to change that because once you schedule a public hearing, the clock starts ticking and you have so many days to, after the close of the public hearing, to make a decision.
Right.
Okay?
The way we've been doing it, I mean, to a point, like already?
Well, kind of.
Because, I mean, we would always go through the application, get information, make sure we had enough, and then.
Well, we scheduled the public hearing ahead of time.
Yeah, right, I'm not saying, but it's.
Right, we were kind of. We're kind of, but we were.
Kind of, we weren't there, yeah.
Chad was scheduling a public hearing.
Right, that's true.
And I get from our discussion that the planning board is the one that needs to determine that we have enough information to schedule a public hearing.
If you.
A perfect example would be one we're currently dealing with. We didn't have enough information to complete, that we didn't feel we had enough information to move forward, but we still scheduled a public hearing and we've got that going and we're still.
It's still.
It may not have had.
It's still open. Yeah, you don't have to close it, right?
Well, that's, that's true. You don't have to close it, but at the same time, my concern would be is if you open a public hearing and we don't have enough information and nobody shows up for the public hearing, how can we keep a public hearing open if there's no public interest? So, we gotta close the public hearing and start the 62-day clock on something we don't have all the information we need because we jumped the gun instead of having a public hearing.
Okay.
Keep it open.
You can't keep it open. There's nobody here, there's no comments. How can you keep it open?
Let's go back.
For what reason, I guess I would say. What's the reason we're keeping it open?
So, go back. Now, how's it work? So, how would it work going forward?
It should be you.
It's.
We should. So, how would it work going forward if that application came in and there's 20 people out here, but we don't have an open public hearing then?
Well, it's got its plan and so.
So, do we still ask for input then, or do we have to come back when we're ready for it?
It's under other board action.
Right.
Under other board action, you're scheduling a public hearing.
So, they would talk to us more.
If we thought we had enough information.
You thought you had enough.
We would explain to them that we don't feel we have enough information to start a public hearing. Please keep your comments and questions because we're gonna get to you eventually.
But it wouldn't be tonight if we were doing it tonight.
But this will also allow, if you deem it complete, the residents that are here to be able to review that before the public hearing so that they have all the information to talk at the public hearing.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a cart before the horse kind of thing. Now, 80%, 90% of our projects are not complex enough that this is gonna matter at all. We're gonna get here and it's gonna be a type-two action. There's gonna be no real need for public hearing. When we get the whatever, we open a public hearing, close a public hearing, we got 62 days from then to make a decision. Most of the time, we'll make a decision that night anyway.
Yep.
I feel the smaller one, we, everything is complete tonight. We don't, we'd set it up for the next meeting.
Yeah.
That'd be how we do it.
Yeah.
Tonight, we, everything looks good, but we do, you know, the people are here. We open and they have to come back on the 17th or whatever to go over all the.
Provided, provided there was enough time to give notice to the newspaper. They publish it five days before that meeting.
Well, there's, the paper is tough to get into. There's, it's not just like I sent, like, we write the legal notice tomorrow, send it to the paper, and they need so many days to be able to get it into the paper. And we need to make sure it's five days before your meeting. So, it's gonna be tricky sometimes. Uh-huh.
How is it so hard? It's so.
Well.
Well, just, yeah, 'cause I do, no, I have to do it for work. When I have stuff coming out for auctions, so I have to do my thing. The email, so when I announce it, who, today, they send me back the draft, and it's ready for next week.
So, correct.
I just need, well.
Next week, when we only have two weeks.
That's be five days.
And, yeah.
Five business days.
It's been 20 days.
Five days.
It's five, five days.
So, you're right, but if we do it on Thursday, if there's anything wrong with it and there's any back and forth with the paper.
Doesn't get published on the Sunday.
Right.
I, it, it's not a big issue. I don't think it's a problem.
Yeah.
But there may be a gray area where something goes awry, whatever reason, you know.
Does that mean we should, we're gonna have to pad things and make sure they're not the next meeting?
They just schedule that, if it doesn't get published, you just push it off to the next one where.
Just wait.
Yep.
Just thinking.
Well, if there ever gonna be an upgrade, I mean.
So, I would say it's not the next one, it's the next.
I would just run it for the next meeting.
See what happens.
And if there's any issues, I will come to the board and say, we gotta postpone this. We gotta continue it, yeah, continue it to the next meeting.
Cause the notice didn't get any.
Yep.
But everything else is still the same right now.
Yep.
You guys are still going through everything. Not gonna make sure that they have all the requirement or all the stuff.
Yes, but I won't be able to schedule any public hearings or, you guys are gonna see the application. You'll most likely have a draft resolution saying that you deem the application complete and they're setting a public hearing.
Deem that we have enough information to proceed with a public hearing.
Correct, sorry.
We gotta be careful of that word, complete, because complete, based on what I read, starts at 62-day clock. And certainly, the public hearing doesn't start at 62-day clock. The end of the public hearing does.
Yep.
So, if we just say we have sufficient information to proceed with public hearing and seeker determination, we're ready to go with the next meeting.
But you can't, you can't schedule a public during the same night, you know, to do it subsequent.
You gotta have five days notice.
Because of the legal notice.
Right.
You gotta, okay.
Now, just to confuse the hell out of you, there is a caveat in the new town law that basically if this board isn't the lead agency and you open a public hearing, you have 120 days to close that public hearing and make a decision. And you may not have the lead agency's negative declaration or a draft environmental impact statement received. I mean, this is New York State, it's messed.
I can't remember the last time we were not.
I'm just, I'm not.
I know, it's possible. And, and where my mind is going at is with solar. With some, the state agency, you open it and say, no, we wanna be the lead agency or some stupid.
Yeah, if somebody comes in with 25 acres or 200, what is it?
Well, usually, the state takes that away from this anyway.
Yeah.
Which I'm also shocked that state takes it.
Put in papers, whatever it needs.
Nobody reads a paper.
Oh.
Who gets it?
Who gets it? That's what I, I. Hell, my 88-year-old mother just stopped the paper because they pissed her off.
But I mean, I'm doing that, yeah.
Yes. That's amazing.
What's the alternative? People aren't on Facebook. Not everybody. I don't know.
I don't know the alternative. I'm just saying.
We hope that on the website.
Been there for a maximum of days before a meeting. And who knows how they're gonna.
The fact that the state hasn't changed it, they got another 10 years to get that to present to us.
Well, if someone else is the lead agency, we just don't schedule the public hearing, right?
You gotta be, you gotta be careful.
Why?
Because once you open it.
Well, that's what I mean. Why would you open a public hearing? We weren't gonna be the, which again, it depends on, if you open a public hearing and you start the coordinator review on the same night and then somebody jumps in on you.
Yep.
You kind of.
Do we have to have a public hearing before we have the coordinator review done? I mean, maybe we get the coordinator review done before we open the public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. That slows things, well, it slows things down by another month.
But there's a problem with that is you're taking away the public's opportunity to comment on the environmental record.
No, because we have, we're not doing the public record.
Yeah, 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 somebody is.
But we're just declaring the data.
Yeah, right.
Huh?
The information isn't received yet.
Then if you don't have complete information, you shouldn't be opening a public hearing.
Complete information could be coordinated review.
You wanna get, Ross, I read section 276 of the town law.
That's what I'm asking.
I'm telling you.
I would say we go ahead and do what we've been doing.
Yeah.
We've never not been lead agency unless we know ahead of time that something's really squirrely and we can make a decision to hold off on public hearing.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, so.
Okay, let's, can we go back to page?
Yeah, um, okay. Okay, I think we need to, on a, a number, on page two, number three, uh, page three, we use the word complete there. Do we really want to use the word complete? An application is sufficient for public hearing? Kind of something there instead of the word complete because
Okay.
Complete to me, from what you've told me, says we're gonna start at 62-day clock.
We don't want that.
Are you talking K3?
K3, yeah. In the red there, it says complete. Let's change that to sufficient.
What page, what page?
Page two.
I got it, Joe.
K3. Just changing the word complete there in red.
Sufficient for public review.
Yeah, there you go. Um, page three looks good.
I just put in the conservation board.
Yep.
If they show up, fine, we ask them what's going on. If they're not here.
Yep. And public meeting thing, I don't care on that one. Yeah. Um, page four, I, you can take that line out there. I don't have a problem with that. All right, now we really get to the, page seven.
Yeah. The insert.
Do you have any, any changes, any comments about Jeff's change on page six?
No, there were no changes on page six. I didn't have any.
Jeff just, just said, to cross out expert, expects, and requires. And staff.
What?
Other agenda.
Page six of 22, number three agendas and legal notices.
There you are in Jeff's moments.
He, he crossed out.
No.
Crossed out respects and put in requires, and then took out and staff.
What do you have? No, that's not.
That's why I gotta call this up and see, maybe.
That's town laws. I gave you one, Jeff.
I had, yeah, I had two of them on my desk.
Yeah, I had two also. He's got it.
Okay.
That right there.
Oh, okay.
Got it?
Yeah. The board requires all applicants?
Yeah, the board requires all applicants to meet. That's all, right?
Yep, no.
So, we changed article six to seven in the.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Last paragraph, yeah, okay.
So, Ron, we got a couple question marks and so we're on page seven now.
Okay.
First paragraph, I didn't have any comments with.
Number four. Right, it's seven days.
What?
Under legal notices? We were just talking about being five years of seven. Well, that, that's not part of the change, which is I just read.
Where.
Legal notices shall be mailed out by seven days prior to public hearing. So, is it five or seven?
Well, that's the, that's the email to the development office so that they can then post them within the newspaper.
Be not less than seven days.
Yeah.
So that they have two days.
To do it.
Okay.
Okay, page seven, item four.
That second paragraph Jeff says to take out because it's the duplicate.
Which one? In accordance with the provisions contained Jeff said below.
That whole, that whole paragraph here.
Second paragraph.
Second paragraph is under four.
Huh?
The whole second.
Second, whatever.
Second page.
Second page of that, yeah, there you go.
Oh, this one here, not that.
Or the second.
One of the other, because I think they're both the same.
Well, one says preliminary subdivision, the other one says preliminary flats. Subdivision flat.
Says this wording.
I know the next page also says subdivision, so it's already on the next page.
All right, well, let's go back to the paragraph right under four. This has to do with preliminary subdivision plat shall not be considered complete until a negback has been filed or until a notice of completion of a draft environmental impact statement has been filed in accordance with. Do all subdivision flats require? Um, I mean, they're, none of them are type.
Two.
Two, so they all have to have.
Either an unlisted or a type one.
Okay, so, so that paragraph is fine. Um, and of course, with provision, a site plan. Now, this is.
In section five.
Section five, first paragraph.
Yep, is it suggesting that we add New York State town law pertaining to site plan review? Which I don't have any problem with.
Took out a certain one, still up. Chapter after.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
You had, no, New York State town law, they changed. Both of those capitalized.
All right, I'm okay there. For a site plan will be made within 62 days of the application being received by the planning board. Do we need to define received by the planning board as accepting the application at our meeting as being?
That's the only way that you can accept.
Well, received by the planning board might be defined as the application received by the building office for the planning board.
No.
No? Okay, all right.
It says planning board.
Okay, well, received is the word that I have a problem with. Acted upon by the, the planning board, which can't act on it till you receive it, never mind. Okay. All right, I'm getting into weed. Special use permits all require a public hearing. So, the next paragraph down. And we are going to have to really look at the preliminary site plan, preliminary flats. Did that say preliminary site plan flats? Um, and whether or not we need a, a public hearing for them or not. We do on the more complex ones, we do not on the simple ones. Well, if everybody's okay with that, I'm okay with it. Just have to, my biggest concern with this kind of stuff is, and that's why I'm glad we have the legal review because we end up drinking port. This is what they're gonna pull out and go, did you guys follow your rules? Well, signed up. We don't need to have. So, I'm okay with that. If everybody else is okay, all the way through to seven.
Seven.
Item.
Seven, page eight. We're on page eight, first couple paragraphs, we're over eight here. Um,
Jeff said ten there of that paragraph seven that he wants.
But then however.
Is there however, without any such application.
Yep.
In there.
Word in. With the planning board.
I can't see where he picked the.
So, under seven is the last sentence, first paragraph, he wants all.
However, without any project.
I print.
We didn't have this public here. You didn't print it?
Public, this is, uh, number eight.
Oh, okay, there it is, okay. All right, so.
That's why it's all off this. I mean, sure, when we had some.
But this then is, this is.
It's however, without any such application.
That comes out. That's pretty much it for Jeff. Mm-hmm.
And don't worry about.
Oh, but, that, that's the, that means you're haunted out.
Wanted out, data's out. So, we're good there. Um, next comment I had here is on page nine. Uh, the last paragraph I found there where it says, when the board's open, meeting determination upon a draft resolution.
Under motions?
Under resolutions. I don't know why I put that. I had a question mark, number 62 day.
I think the problem, that's got, he, he's gonna say number nine, but it might not be correct.
Yeah.
Number ten.
Yeah, so he's running off the, oh, their number shifted.
Yeah.
So, he wrote it on all that.
Yeah, so I just had something, question mark, 62 day, we need that, yeah, but I'm, I'm convinced I'm screwed up, so I wrote that when I was confused.
Okay.
Okay, page 10, voting. I don't see any need for changes there, no. Page 11, seeker.
Now, it's basically saying you can't make a decision. Okay, on a preliminary application until seeker has been complied with. You all, you know that.
Correct.
This is the wording that they put in town law.
And that's kind of what we do now.
Yes.
Even not every preliminary flat will require an EIS.
We haven't required an EIS and I don't know when.
Right, so. I mean, okay. Then there's some corrections under planning, county planning recommendations, bringing that up a little bit.
Removing some stuff.
Yeah, and then.
Number 15.
Under 15, the disapproval without prejudice. That is.
This is something new.
It is new.
And, and Jeff said that it would help the planning board to have this in their rules or procedure. In case you wanted to disapprove without prejudice because you had some application that wasn't giving you what you were asking.
Correct. Good idea to have it in. That's all I printed out, I didn't see any other changes that were anything other than administrative.
Under number eighteen, I just added, you know, we now have duties and responsibilities set forth in chapter nine.
Right.
The numbers go sixteen, sixteen there too, just. John.
John, everything all add up.
Know where you're on, Ron, sorry, but it said sixteen and then service of the floor, then sixteen.
Yep. Good catch, I didn't even see that.
I could crush it all, those are eight.
I know.
The sixteen is.
One of them just needs to be seven.
I'm gonna give this to you, John, so you, you have it.
Yeah, maybe we'll go tomorrow together.
Okay. And then the rest of it looks to me.
I don't think they already made the changes.
They get to override duties and responsibilities been removed on page eighteen or twenty-one.
On page sixteen, just want to get an order there. Uh, under head, comparison of the.
Page sixteen.
Acting chair.
Oh, yeah. You got it. Thank you.
Good job with everything else? I didn't see anything on the other.
We're, we're taking a little bit of. There was other sections where I saw it, we just.
Yeah. So all this probably sets you in time.
Yeah.
Thing that it was already set back here.
Right.
Just cleaning it up was probably in the middle, so.
That's why I thought, that's why I didn't even bring. We good?
So you're good down to the move the resolution and is it gonna be still?
Okay, so.
Maybe.
So here's what I'm gonna ask, do we have a motion to approve the rules of procedures with the changes that Ron made?
And Jeff.
Or, and Jeff graph suggested, as well as any that we made tonight to the, uh, or I have a motion that we approve this and, uh, move it forward.
I, I have a question, okay. So thirty-two, store personnel.
Well, there's been a couple instances where I've thought we might have needed a fire chief to comment on something.
Okay.
He not listed on here. Does that, does he need to be listed on here?
I thought, uh, fire department was listed on.
By the county, or not?
He had a part of the board under open discussion.
That's good enough.
I think so. I will tell you, every project is reviewed by the fire marshal.
Yeah.
Who is in contact with the chiefs. Uh, and the fire department receives the same packets you guys do. With requests for comments back. And so they have the opportunity uh, as we send it to all staff to comment back on any project. Uh, that is part of staff review.
So they're not, they're not commenting as public.
No.
No.
No, they're not. I believe, yep.
Yep.
Considered that.
Have been for years. So, yeah. Yep. Yeah, so when we how does the middle work, just so you guys have a better understanding of it, is the week before you guys get packets, is the staff review week. We send everything with the shared file to all the departments, so water sewer, highway, MRB, um, fire department, uh, conservation gets some, um. Now, mind you, it all depends on the project. If it doesn't have anything to do with a town road, highway doesn't get a copy of. That's something that we review, but overall, on these big projects, everybody on that list is getting a link to the project. With a deadline of, you need to have your comments back by, usually it's the following Wednesday.
At noon.
Yep, so that those, all of them get compiled and we give it to Ron. And Ron takes all the comments and puts your draft resolution together that we then put in a packet to you guys.
Isn't that how we get that? Everybody else has, this much, they have as much say, nothing to say.
Yep, so, um, a lot of times the fire marshal will contact the fire department directly and say, well, here's my concerns, do you guys have anything additional? And a lot of those comments will just go under the fire marshal. So when you see that, those comments sometimes get merged together.
Also remember the fire, the fire marshal here.
Yeah.
Augie, correct?
Correct.
And he's, uh, the firefighter out in local town nearby, so. He, you know, he knows too, so he, like, he, by the way, Dan's explaining, so he, it's not like it's just his job here. He also fights fires, like, he really knows.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot. A lot of stuff happening behind the scenes, a lot of things the fire marshal calls out, uh, that overlap. Uh, you have to remember, like, the construction inspectors, their comments overlap with the water and sewer department.
Right.
Overlaps with highway. Um, so, a lot of times we merge that all together to give that list to Ron. Uh, but yes, those are the, where the comments come from. Uh, that's what we worked on the week before, then you guys get that packet for a week and then they, they're appropriate that following week, so.
Anybody else have any other comments? I have a motion to approve the, uh, resolution to approve these rules of procedures.
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, second about. Adrian, any other comments? All favor seeing the public saying aye. Aye, okay. You guys can go ahead and fix those up. And go from there, okay, guys? Thank you. Thanks, Ron, I know you did a lot of work and I know, well, it went off the rails into this other weird stuff, so. Do what we gotta do. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, Redfield Grove, Redfield, phase two letter of credit, did that all get?
No, it did not, so I'm asking this board to remove that from the agenda. We asked for it to be continued to this meeting, I'm asking for it to be removed at this point. There, uh, we have been able to verify the landscaping wasn't installed, so we are gonna work with the applicant and telling them that they have to uh, renew their letter of credit.
Consider it ruled.
Thank you.
Open discussion, director of development, Ron.
Okay. Um, today we met with Mr. Fowler and his engineer and his attorney. We being Dan, Augie, Peter and I. Mr. Cambar had submitted a letter with new applications for a different variance from what was originally requested. Along with a revised preliminary drawing for the subdivision plan.
Now, the original variance was for thirty feet, this was for twenty-two.
Right. And the reason being given is that with the twenty-two feet, it eliminates the need for an additional variance. So basically the purpose of the meeting was to bring the new attorney up to speed with what had been going on for several months. And, uh, as a result, I believe we anticipate receiving from Mr. Cambar at APD Engineering a letter that basically says in response to the planning board's directions, we have looked at these sections of the code and we've made these changes to the drawing and we've got a revised drawing, okay? Now, that doesn't change your part of the process, because they're still asking for three lots. Okay, the configuration of those three lots have changed. But the variance is the big thing that has changed. And we basically have asked them to withdraw the original thirty-foot wide frontage variance request.
Or to the ZBA.
To the ZBA. To avoid confusion. And they are asking us to review the drawings, review this letter that we haven't seen yet. And then if everything looks good to Dan and I, we'll put it on the agenda for your meeting in February on the
Seventh.
Seventh.
With the expectation that we would.
Then be able to say.
Peter.
That you'd be able to say it's complete. And so let's go ahead and send it to the county, let's address seeker, make our determinations to this.
Would we have to re-canvas on seeker with the new updated changes?
The only two involved agencies of the planning board is the ZBA.
So we, so we would have the information we needed to be able, would we be able to go forward with seeker at that point, or would we have to wait for county to come back before we could approve seeker?
My advice to you would be to wait for county to come back.
Okay. So at this, at the next meeting, Fowler, we would say, okay, we have basically received sufficient information to move forward with seeker and to send the county group's parole, which we know is and we won't get any, we won't get stuff back till after the seventh of February or March. Seventh of February. Well, we wouldn't want to re-stand the public hearing until after the county had a chance to get back to us. So then at that point though, we would expect to be able to do two things, we'd expect to be able to address seeker as well as provide the ZBA with recommendations on this project. And that's where you guys need to start thinking about, what do we want to tell the ZBA? Without saying approve, disapprove, what are our concerns with the Fowler project? The steep slopes, the difference, the change in the neighborhood type of thing. Whatever you guys are concerned with or not concerned with, that you like about it. Um, my biggest concern is that it changes, but it's a small neighborhood and it changes really the layout of the neighborhood. But number two, the fact that the one lot is built on steep slopes or close to it, which means that there'll be no accessory structures allowed. So even though for whoever has it right now, if Fowler built it himself, it's when he gets rid of it, the next person comes in and says, oh, I wanna put out a shed, where am I gonna put it, and they're gonna say, you can't. And then they're gonna come in and ask for a variance again to put a shed to side yard, cause they paid for it in their backyard. I don't know if it fits without allowing someone to do some type of decisions.
Okay, that's enough discussion.
I know. I know, but I mean, those are the type of things that I'm looking for the board to come back with for our discussion.
Yeah, and, and so basically, uh, I think according to Jeff and, and both Dan and I talked to Jeff this afternoon. You know, Jeff basically said that if we're satisfied, if the planning board is satisfied that they've given you the information that you need for your subdivision or your resubdivision application, then there's the only outstanding issue is the variance and they have asked that the current variance request be put on hold indefinitely. I don't like that, Jeff doesn't like that. And others that we've talked to don't like that, because that introduces contusion over what are we doing? Okay, so. Um, the other thing I just wanna say about this whole thing is that there is a section of the town code that talks about once you guys determine an application is denied for whatever reasons. Uh, there has to be s- significant change to the application in order for you to hear it. Or they have to wait a year before they come back.
So what we would do is approve the seeker, send our recommendations to the ZBA. ZBA then has to make their determination, if they incline it.
They deny it, then you.
They deny it.
You have no choice.
Then we have no choice, I mean, they could, I guess, come back with an updated plan again that would address that, but updated plan would be to go back to two.
So we're, we're not sending recommendations, only sending.
We have to send recommendations, but the recommendations don't have to be approved or disapproved. Recommendations are, please consider X, Y, Z, these are the issues that we see. I don't wanna go on record and saying, hey, we really did, we suggest or recommend that you deny this. I don't wanna go on the record that way. I can say, here's a mission, we, as a planning board, think are important.
Yep. The other thing I, um, two things I wanna report on, number one, we are right on the cusp of getting ready to go out to bid on the sidewalk project.
Yep.
So we're waiting the written document saying the state DOT is accept everything we've given them, which we expect within the next two weeks. And hopefully we can award a contract here in March for this project to get underway.
Cool.
Um, the other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention was the, um. That was the other thing. I'm losing it. Lost it, sorry, guys.
All right, you'll, you'll think I was in the middle of the dance.
Yeah.
All right, Dan?
All right, uh, your next meeting. You have attic landing, which is the power uh, property, it's coming in front of you for the subdivision and site plan for preliminary overall. Uh, you have a two-lot subdivision on Route ninety-six. You have the Redfield um, phase three resubdivision, um, that just got their incentive zoning amended, so that's coming in front of you to actually divide up the five lots as proposed in the incentive zoning. And you also have Farmborough overall preliminary site plan for section seven A and seven B. So.
Along with Fowler, right?
No, Fowler is not till February.
Okay.
Um, and I believe there's gonna be a letter of credit possibly mixed in there that we're in the process of reviewing now, so. So there, there, you got a couple fairly large projects there, um, all heading on one, one evening, so. We will have these out to you next Wednesday. Staff will finish their review this week, um. And we'll all those projects are also on for PRC tomorrow. And, uh, we'll include those, that information for you guys as well. As we always try to have projects hit PRC first before they hit, uh, planning board.
Ron, what did you remember?
The county's hazmat plan.
Yeah.
And basically, uh, I'm reviewing the forty-some pages that pertains to Farmington uh, in the hazmat plan. And we'll have that by the end of the week. Anybody wants to see it, let me know and I'll send you an electronic copy of it. Been working with the fire department on uh, identifying needed improvements to station two as part of the hazard mitigation plan. Gotta have it in the plan in order for FEMA to even consider.
Right.
No guarantees, but it's not there, they don't even look at it.
Okay, okay, for me, um. Okay, go ahead.
So highway's not here tonight, um, he said he will be at your next meeting. Says he's preparing for snow, which, uh, hopefully is coming. Uh, town engineer is also, this was his first day back from having like fourteen days off or something crazy. So, um, he said that he's always available if you need his help and he will also be here on the seventeenth. Um, the seventeenth, we will be full staff, uh, for that meeting. Um, the seventeenth, we will be full staff, uh, for that meeting. Uh, I will also try to make sure the fire department's here as well, since there is a lot of projects on for that.
Right, and the environmental board, if they want to come, make sure they get stood at the table, the of their conservation.
I've asked Marcy to get a
Yeah.
nameplate for the conservation board.
Cool.
And you're, now that you've approved your rules and procedures, this will be updated to have them as a line item under open discussion.
Good.
Um, so that will be changed, and obviously with the rules and procedures, you're gonna have more things under o- other board matters because of trying to review things before public meetings are set.
And, uh, that's kinda what I was gonna get into in my comments, is we're, I'm gonna work closely with staff to make sure we get that, the process consistent as best we can. If you see something that may not be consistent, let us know, please review your packets because we're, you know, everything is changing a little bit. But like I said, we've got some big ones here, and that big paddock landing's kind of big, but pretty basic, I mean, I hate to say that. Houses on lots, okay? Uh, even the phase three re-sub for Redfield is just changed from five to four, basically, right?
Well, there's, actually, it's all one lot, so you were actually making the five blocks now.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, they never moved forward. It was approved by I Z to be six slots, right, and now it's time to five.
It was, it was approved to be five lots, but a portion of lot number one included the house.
Okay.
Okay? And so what we basically have done is created moved the lot lines, reduced the number of lots on the east side of Commercial Drive.
Right.
From five to four, and then we had the original house.
Until we get to.
So we still have five.
The actual building. Farm Brook, and then we certainly have the solar coming up. At some point, coming up, hopefully.
We hope.
And we get that thing rolling. That could, from what I've heard, have some, uh, some resident, uh, input. Uh, since it's right on the other side of the woods from, uh, the Redfield area, that. Other than that, um, you know, we just continue to do what we gotta do, um. Anybody have anything else? Any comments? Um, they got a bunch. Okay. And I got, good, small things, although with Dan, we have it, okay. Next meeting, uh, January seventeenth, um, in public, so, uh. Hope to adjourn by air and second of Adrian, all in favor?
Uh.
Okay.